I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of July 21st, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action on all items on today's agenda is a recommendation to the city council or the county board. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 7th, 2021.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Shear.
Jerry?
Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, prior to doing so, I would note that Item 1.2, Change of Zone 21024, is being pulled from the consent agenda and will have a separate public hearing. So I will go ahead and read the first item. It's Item 1.1, Change of Zone 15016C, to amend the layout of Lot 1 and 2, Block 3, with waivers to reduce setbacks on property generally located at South Fortieth Street and Crescent Drive. I would also note that the staff, the staff provided a memo to the Planning Commission dated July 20th reflecting some revisions to the conditions of approval as agreed upon by the staff and the applicant. The, or the final item on consent is Item 1.3, Special Permit 1185A, to amend the existing special permit to adjust setbacks and reconfigure the parking lot on property located at 1106H Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites?
I don't believe we have any of those either.
Okay. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on the two items that I read into the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state your desire.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy?
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Abstain.
Edgerton?
Yes.
And Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. Public to, prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 3.1 is Change of Zone 21024 from B1 Local Business District to H2 Highway Business District on property generally located at 4615 Vine Street. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site?
No. All right, George?
George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. So the location for this change of zone, we're on the south side of Vine Street, east side of North 45th Street. And the request, again, is a change of zone from B1 Local Business District to H2 Highway Business District. The rezoning area includes approximately 8.04 acres in total. The change of zone area includes the proposal by the applicant, Kelly's Carpet and Furniture, which is partially Zoned B1 and H2. So I'll show another exhibit here. This is a zoning map that shows exclusively the Kelly's Carpet and Furniture property in the dash black line, and it's split zoning now, H2-B1. So their proposal is to allow for climate-controlled self-storage units, which are allowed under H2 zoning as mini warehouse, but are not allowed under B1 zoning. In addition, the Planning Department, as part of this change of zone, added the adjoining properties on both sides of Kelly's Carpet property in order to achieve zoning consistency in the area. So rezoning of this area will allow for the specific mini warehouse use for the one property and will allow for consistent zoning of H2s for the area as well. There was included in your staff report a list of uses or comparison of uses from the zoning ordinance. In general, the vast majority of uses allowed in B1 are also allowed in H2. The notable differences would be certain residential uses are allowed by special permit or conditionally in B1, whereas those residential uses are not allowed under H2. At the same time, the H2 zoning allows several uses which are not allowed in B1, such as contractor services, cabinet shops, mini warehouses, and a few other uses that you find in the commercial zoning districts. In terms of the setbacks and the height requirements, overall, the differences between the two districts are minor, so it would not be a substantial change there. There's just some minor differences. Parking is actually less restrictive in the H2 district versus B1, so less parking would be required with the change of zone. And then, I would note, just before this hearing, there was an email received from legal representation for the baseline group, which owns property on both sides of the proposed rezoning area, and they are presently opposed to the rezoning due to insufficient information. They are requesting a two-week continuance of the hearing so that they can receive additional information. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for George? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Baylor Evinon Law Firm, and I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Kelly's Carpet, LLC. As George noted, the application before you today is to change zone from B1 to H2. My client intends to convert a portion of the, well, it's their intent as of now to convert a portion of the current facility to mini warehouse use. The idea would be that it would be a self, climate-controlled self-storage intended towards consumers, not businesses. Also, that there would be a portion of the property would continue to remain the retail carpet sale, but it would be a portion of their stockroom storage area in the back that would be changed to warehouse use, and that their intent is to have a minimal impact on the exterior of the building. This is a shopping center, as such, it's subject to private covenants that govern its use and have requirements for parking outside of just the zoning code, and the intent is to comply with all of that. I think at this point, we don't have an objection to the two-week delay. We did, we did notify by letter the surrounding property owners prior to submitting an application that we would be seeking a change of zone, and have been in continual communication with them since then. But at this point, we have no objection to a two-week delay. If the Planning Commission so chooses, we will continue that communication and be in front of you in two weeks. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Ann, I'm curious, where will that access point be for the self-storage? Will that be coming from behind the building, or will that be coming from the front?
Let me get a map in front of me. I think the access would, my understanding at this point, we don't have, because we're still at the point of looking for a change of zone, we don't have construction documents or layouts put together yet. But the intent is to continue to have the access from the front of the building with modifications to doors, to maybe have automatic doors instead of pole doors, as would better facilitate people carrying in and out with heavy things that they need to store, so.
Great. All right. Any other questions for Ann? Oh, go ahead.
Just a clarification, Ann. You have been in communication with the other party?
Yes.
And we'll continue that?
Yes.
If we do the two-week delay?
We're happy to.
Do, have they expressed any concerns to you?
At this point, they've asked, there's been an information gathering process, and we've had conversations, sharing information about covenants, about our intended uses, and been able to provide them the information they've asked for.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Is there any testimony in support of this project? Any testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony in, for this project? How about any testimony in op, oh? Are, are you out there, Zoom testifier? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi. Who do we have here? Can you tell me your name?
Steve Hendrickson of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. The person on line is Sean James, who had sent you the email as well. She was just trying to give her comments on this. We actually have the same technology. We're just trying to use it from a different location because there's a meeting next door. So if we are unable to get her testimony via Zoom, our understanding is it was going to be similar to the request for the two weeks, which the applicant has agreed to.
Do you want me to continue waiting, or?
I think at this point, you can proceed.
Hi, can you hear us, Sean?
Sean, can you hear us?
Yeah, I think, given that the applicant has agreed to the two-week delay, that'll give the person trying to testify two weeks to give something in writing, or appear in person, or hopefully by Zoom next time.
Great. Okay. So before we move on, any other testimony for this item on the agenda? No. Okay. Do you want to hear from staff again? Applicant, anything else you want to say? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move that we provide a two-week continuance.
Close public hearing?
Oh, you want to close it first? Okay.
No.
Oh, we don't want to? Okay.
Yeah. I move that we defer for two weeks.
Okay.
Second, Joy?
Discussion? Okay, great. Thanks to the applicant for being flexible, and we'll go ahead and take a vote, Jerry.
Okay, this is for the two-week deferral of Change of Zone 21024 to the August 4th, 2021 Planning Commission hearing. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, then.
Okay. Next item is Item 4.1, which is Text Amendment 21005 to amend Article 14 Community Unit Plan and Article 15 Additional Use Regulations of the Lancaster County Zoning Regulations and amend Chapter 2 Definitions of the Lancaster County Subdivision Resolution to allow for solar energy conversion systems and all necessary apparatuses. Is that what that, within an outlot. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
Go ahead, Dick.
I had a citizen call me and start proceeding with her opinion on, on this, and I informed her that she should contact the Planning Department and write a letter or fill out the email form, and we left it at that.
Great. Any other? Okay.
Okay, are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this? Never mind, it doesn't apply.
All right, Tom.
We, oh, I just want to note that we do have a number of people that have signed up to testify. If you aren't signed up, you can still testify. We'll call for additional testimony. So just, I wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
All right.
Tom Chaka, Planning Staff, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 213. As Jerry said, and I'll just repeat, this application is to amend the Lancaster County zoning regulations, Article 14 Community Unit Plans, and Article 15 Additional Use Regulations, and to amend the Lancaster County Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 2 Definitions. And this amendment is to allow solar energy conversion systems within an outlot, where the outlot is within a community unit plan. This text amendment's very specific, very narrow, only applies to community unit plans. So some background on what is a community unit plan. This applies in the AG Agriculture and the AGR Agricultural Residential Districts. A community unit plan in the AG District is basically a way to allow houses on lots that are less than 20 acres. Under the strict AG zoning, a lot would have to be 20 acres to put a house on it. So this allows, basically, you take the total area of the boundary of the community unit plan, say if it's 100 acres, you divide by 20, and then there's usually a bonus of one lot. So 100 acres, you'd probably get six lots on the total 100 acres. Of that 100 acres, if you're, you're required to set aside 50% of it in open space or agricultural use if you do not use the density bonus, or if you ask for a density bonus, then it's 70% is required to remain in open space. I just kind of picked one at random out in the county to give you an idea of what a CUP, Community Unit Plan, is. That comes So in this particular one, the lots are clustered here and up here. Then all of this area is the required open space. The way the code is written today, the, that open space can only be used for open space or agricultural purposes. This text amendment would add that it can also be used for solar energy conversion systems. Currently, if you're under the AG zoning, solar energy conversion systems are allowed by special permit. So in other AG land, you could apply for the special permit. But it's kind of like, the way the open space requirement is written under the Community Unit Plan chapter, that the county attorneys have determined that this solar energy conversion systems would not be allowed without this text amendment. Any questions?
Yeah, Tom, can you please bring me that example you had back up?
Sure.
I assume that's a dam there in the middle. Is that correct?
You know, I didn't look at it that closely, but it very well could be.
And then, to the north of that, northeast of that, is that a pond or a lake then? Or is it back on the other side?
Yeah, it says it's a pond.
Okay. If that weren't a pond, would the, would this allow then the solar panels to be brought up to the rear lot lines of those lots?
It would allow the panels on the outlots. And you got to remember that they still have to, to do an actual project, they have to present a special permit, and the special permit has rules for how far the panels have to be set back to non-participating properties.
And, and what is that, do you know?
A hundred feet.
Okay.
So a special permit would always be required before solar panels could be installed on the open space in a CUP, in an ag CUP?
If it was a large project. Now, there are, they are allowed as a conditional use if they're smaller, like, I don't have an example in the county, but in the city, Capital Beach did one where they just put a few solar panels in their outlot for their own use. If somebody wanted to do something like that, that would be allowed without a special permit.
Go ahead.
Tom, in most cases, are the outlots owned by the original developer, or are they owned by?
It's both. It's all different ways. I've seen them owned by the developer. I've seen them sold off and owned by private individuals. I've seen them owned by an adjacent property owner. Seen them owned by associations.
In, in the area that has been designated for the solar panels, how many CUPs exist?
Well, we don't have an application yet for a, for a project.
Okay.
Now, I can tell you that at their open house, that they showed what the preliminary boundary they were showing has four CUPs within the boundary.
Okay.
Tom, I know the staff report talks about, in the future, it might be suitable to look at outlots in AG preservation
Correct.
areas. What about, you know, we have CUPs in the city as well. Would it be something in the future that we might look to add, you know?
They're already allowed in the city.
Okay.
Because the city zoning is written, it's written quite a bit differently than the way the county zoning is.
And can you tell me, you know, we say agricultural uses, so I'm assuming crops, if they wanted to have cattle or, you know, those kinds of animals. Any other ag uses that I'm not thinking of?
No, I would say just crops or animals.
Okay.
I mean, people got to remember, you know, a vineyard is considered, would be considered crop, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom right now? Okay, applicant? Okay, applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner's David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 625 South 14th Street, on behalf of the applicant. I think the staff report and some of the commission's questions covered this fairly well, but I will add or emphasize a few points. Again, first and foremost, and I know you all know this, but it bears repeating, this is a county-wide zoning text amendment. This is not an application for any specific project. It should not be, although it may become a referendum on solar energy. It is none of those things. This is a small, as Tom said, narrow, technical change to the county's zoning regulations. As Tom also said, one of the reasons for this change is to harmonize the county's zoning on this particular point with the city's zoning. This is really a remedying a quirk of, or a difference between the two jurisdictions, and as you know, some projects are within both jurisdictions, and so it's helpful to have consistency across the jurisdictions. As the staff report also points out in quite a bit of detail, there's about a page of different points in the comprehensive plan where this text amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. I believe you also received a letter from the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce expressing their support for this as consistent with the direction of the business community in Lincoln and Lancaster County. This is really also a question of private property rights. The people who own these outlots shouldn't be dictated, in our opinion, as to whether they can plant corn, soybeans, cattle, vineyards, or solar panels. They could also plant trees, for example. And it's important to remember, Commissioner Campbell, you asked about the setbacks. One of the other things you all might recall from the county's zoning regulations is a great amount of detail and requirements on screening for many home within 300 feet of a solar panel. So these outlots would all be subject to those same restrictions. Commissioner Edgerton, you asked about the special use permit, subject to all of those same restrictions, conditions of approval that the planning commission or the county board might impose, all of those things. It's really adding solar energy to the types of agricultural, low-impact, non-housing, non-urban uses in these outlots. That's kind of the trade-off, as Tom described it, is you cluster all of the homes in one area and you agree not to build homes in the other area. This is not changing that fundamental bargain. This is simply allowing solar panels in addition to all of those other types of agricultural livestock-type uses that we talked about. Just one other point, and then I'd be happy to take any questions the commission might have, and we'll have a chance for rebuttal also, thank you. You know, again, Commissioner Campbell, you asked about ownership. Regardless of what happens here today, or regardless of the county's zoning regulations or anything else, whoever owns these outlots has the right to lease them to a solar developer or not. Right? That is a private contract, there's no eminent domain, there's nothing like that. If the owner of those outlots is the original developer, and they don't want to lease them for solar panels, they certainly don't have to, and no solar panels will be built there if it's the homeowners association and they don't want to do that, they certainly don't have to do that. So there is a strong element of private property, private negotiation. You cannot build the solar panels where you do not have the property rights to do so. Same thing if there are covenants that came along with the development that cover these outlots that would prohibit this. What's before you today would not change those. Those covenants sit on top of the zoning, and they would limit or potentially prohibit what could be built there in this vein as well. So, again, this is a narrow, technical text amendment that is countywide. This is not an application for a project. This would harmonize the county's regulations with the city's in this regard, and we would respectfully ask the commission to move this forward to the county board with a positive recommendation, ideally. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Levy, you proposed the language that's in front of us, is that correct?
I did.
And so you proposed that with the idea that a project might be coming in front of us at some future point?
Absolutely.
And so it's your understanding that when that project, assuming that these changes were made, when that project comes forward, that then we would be considering a special permit that would then have various conditions relating to that project?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And would have to comply with all of the zoning regulations, fact screening, all of that, yep.
Dick?
Does, with the screening that has to be 300 foot away from the properties, does that mean automatically that you're setting back 300 foot on a, in an outlot on any project?
No, what that means is that if that, if the house is within 300 feet of the outside edge of the solar project, the developer has to provide screening for that residence. So the house could be closer, the screening would therefore be closer, but the screening would be required. If the house were 400 feet away, the screening would not be required under the zoning.
Okay.
Other questions right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we open this up for testimony and support, I want to remind you that this is just a text amendment. It's not in relation to any special project or any, any project that's going to happen. So this is just countywide. Jerry, do you have a list up there?
Yes. Are there any additional, are there any individuals present that would like to testify in support?
In support?
No, no, no.
Okay. We're only looking for testifiers in support right now. Okay.
Anyone with, that would like to testify with neutral testimony? Okay, we'll move on. Oh, we do have a Zoom.
It's neutral.
That is neutral, but we'll probably not be able to... Yeah.
Okay.
I think he's checking.
Is that the person who sent the letter?
I don't think we have a letter from this individual.
Okay. We did have a letter that was neutral, and they said they were going to be presenting information today.
Doug, can you hear us out there?
I wonder if Doug could use the chat to at least let us know if he can hear.
It looks like Doug is muted, but...
Yeah, Doug is muted.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Doug, are you ready to testify?
Hello?
Hi. I don't know if they can hear me.
I think that's the problem.
Uh huh. Yeah, just type in the chat to go ahead and tell them to testify.
Doug, you can testify.
Okay, I would just like to stay as an attendee and listen to the other testimony, and if I choose to unmute, then I will do so later, if that's okay.
If you're going to talk, you have to talk now, or you have to testify now.
Thank you.
But you can listen, but if, your chance to speak is right now.
I'm not sure he's hearing us.
Doug, did you hear, hear the? They need you to testify now, if you intend to testify, this is the time for neutral positions to testify.
Okay, I'll just, I'll decline to testify at this time, thank you.
We'll move on to your position. Like I indicated, we do have a list of individuals who have signed up to testify. I will just go in the order that they were provided. And I'll call three names at a time, so you can kind of be on board, knowing who's up next. Mick Von Bush, Corby Gilbertson, and John Regan are the first three.
Nope.
Hello, my name's Mick Von Bush. Live at 1633 North 173rd and Sage Book Estates. As residents of CUPs, we've literally invested millions of dollars in our properties, and we have done so based on the land uses approved by the planning department and the county board. I can tell you right now, knowing all of my neighbors and speaking to them, that none of them would have built where we did if we known we were going to be encroached by solar panels. So, I called the other day, and I spoke to Mr. Chaka.
Can we get that fixed, please? Before we go on?
Oh, try now. I think I, I think I did it.
Okay. Anyway, I called down here the other day, and I talked to Mr. Chaka about this project. And I said that nobody around us wants to live in an industrial solar panel complex, a power plant. It's a power plant. It's industrial project creating energy to be sold. It's industrial. We have zoning for a reason. Most zoning doesn't allow industrial next to residential. It's, it's a safety issue, it's a health issue, it's an environmental issue, and quite frankly, I don't think we know enough information to put this next to homes. It's huge. When speaking with Mr. Chaka, he, he told me that it's, it's not an industrial power plant. And I said, "Well, yes, it is because of this, this, and this." And he's like, "Well, no, it's not." And he's like, "I'm not going to argue with you. It's just solar panels." Literally said, "It's just solar panels." It illustrates to me exactly how much thought has been put into this. I mean, it's just solar panels, put them anywhere. You know, who cares what the landscape looks like? Who cares if there's harmful materials in them? Who cares? It's just solar panels. I, I, that rubbed me wrong, because it just tells me they don't care. So, the other part of this is, I know it's not for a specific project, but there is a specific project. Everybody knows it. And the county language allows these panels within 150 feet of my neighbor's front door. I'm affected the least, I'm in the corner where they can't really put anything, I probably won't see it. But who on earth wants an industrial complex 150 feet from a residential front door? Our CUPs were put together with an exact purpose in mind, as was stated, the green spaces. That's what we bought. That's what we bought into, that's what we were promised. That promise should be maintained. That was done by the planning department and the county board. I see no reason, other than some out-of-state company wanting to come in and make a buck, to even change that. There's no reason. There's plenty of space in the county, put it somewhere where there isn't 100-plus homes, and there's literally 100-plus homes, I counted. The other thing is, our property values. Everything you see that says there is no change in property value was commissioned by a power company. Everything I've found that's done by universities and other places that are not part of the power company in any way have said 5% to 19% loss in value, based on proximity. So if they're within 300 feet, it's 19%. So my neighborhood alone, if we dropped 19%, would lose a million dollars in value, and we're less than 10% of the homes out there. Less than 10%. So we're looking tens of millions of dollars just because they want to encroach on our residences. There's plenty of other ground. That money, that million dollars out of our neighborhood, that's retirement money. I plan on living in my acreage until I can't take care of it. When I want to sell it, I want to be able to actually sell it. I haven't spoke to a single person that would buy my house if there's solar panels 100 feet from it. That's just the reality of it. I don't know anybody that would want to live in the middle of an industrial power plant. I mean...
One minute.
So, I just, I just think it's unreasonable. I think it's flat-out unethical, immoral to change a CUP after it's been developed, after it's been set in stone, what it should be used for. Solar is nowhere near agricultural. Nowhere near. It doesn't grow anything, it's not living, it's not an animal. It's just wrong. I really believe it's wrong. I could go into a lot of other stuff, but we only have five minutes. So, I guess I'll end it at that, but it's just wrong.
Questions? Okay, thank you for coming up.
Okay, next up is Corby, Corby or Kirby Gilbertson, John Regan, and Andrew Poole. Oops, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Corby Gilbertson. It's spelled K-O-R-B-Y-G-I-L-B-E-R-T-S-O-N, and my address is 17860 Notting Hills Drive. That is in the Wyndham Estates property near 176th and Holdridge. I also, I'm testifying today kind of as twofold. Number one, I bought the outlot of our neighborhood precisely because it was limited, precisely because I said to our neighbors, "I want to protect our sunsets. I want to protect this area from being built on. I don't want further development out there, and nor would I have ever made the investment to purchase that land or, frankly, build my home there if I knew that this was a potential thing, that project that was going to come." Now I realize my neighborhood might not be impacted, because obviously I would not be one that would give a lease to my property. However, I think that to say that this is just an amendment change and it's just countywide, we're just changing a definition, is very dangerous. When you look at the definition, it says that the land is to be unimproved and remain as agriculture. Anytime you add something that isn't agriculture or change the use of that land, you are making a major change in what many, many developments have counted on across the county. And this isn't just for those of us who are here, who I'm guessing the majority of us are from East Lincoln, where we have received news of a project that is going to be proposed, but rather, this is countywide, and that concerns me even further. There are developments to the south of Lincoln that have no idea that this is being proposed today, because they have no idea there's going to be a proposed project. I think it's very dangerous to make a wholesale, major change in a definition that impacts not only existing developments, but people who are purchasing property right now with the thought of knowing that nothing will be developed there because of the limitations on this land. And I want you, I am not against solar or wind energy in my professional life. I actually work for wind energy companies. I've done other renewable energy projects, but I think they should be done a different way. We, someone talked about whether or not there's just going to be one large project. We don't know. We don't know if there's going to be one large 3,000-acre project, or if there's going to be 100 different 30-acre projects. We don't know that, and I think that's another reason why this is dangerous to just make a wholesale change in a definition. I don't think this, as Mr. Levy said, remedies a quirk between the city and the county zoning. Those differences are there for a reason. If you look at the comprehensive plan, and part of what I gave you was some other quotes from the comprehensive plan that staff did not include in their, in their report, I think it's important to look at all of these. And one of, one of them, near the bottom, is neighborhoods and housing, and the purpose is to encourage acreages to develop in appropriate areas and preserve farmland. I don't think there's a person in this room that would say that preserving farmland in an agricultural use would be a giant solar panel farm. If you turn the page, and I apologize, that photo is dark, but it was the best I could get to print off, if you see the little white building in the middle, this, that is the LES facility on West Holdridge Street. If you look directly below that, you can see where it's a little darker and obviously a square section. That is the LES solar project. I did a little checking, and the property value of the land where that solar project is, has fallen from 847,826 to 683,22020. So to say that there will be no impact on property values, the property itself that it's sitting on has gone down, and I tell you, there aren't very many ag people that are saying their property values have gone down. I know mine hasn't. The other thing I wanted to discuss was the language that's used in this amendment and the definition of appurtenances. So there are different types of appurtenances, whether or not you're talking in legal terms or whether or not you're talking in... or whether or not you're talking in physical property terms. So an appurtenance could be anything from a right-of-way that's necessitated in order to be able to get to those solar panels.
One minute.
Or it could be something else that needs to be built along with those solar panels. We don't know what that is. There's no definition of that. Furthermore, there really isn't a limitation as to what the solar project could be. It says solar panels or other equipment. So that is very broad and does not give an exact picture of what possibly could be there. And I think that's something else the planning commission should consider. With that, I thank you and take any questions.
You mentioned definition of appurtenances, and then what was the second one? You just mentioned.
Other equipment.
Other equipment.
Right. So it could be buildings that are required, things like that, which right now, we can't build a building. We, none of that can be done for a reason.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up I have John Regan, Andrew Poole, and Matt Franzen.
Hello, John Regan. I live at nineteen eleven North one hundred and twenty-ninth. Just a couple of quick points, I guess. First and foremost, I want to bring up the fact that right now, we're protected. The rules are in place to protect that land, those outlots behind our properties. And what you're getting ready to do is unprotect us. It was originally thought, I mean, the rules are written right now for protection for us is in place right now. And you are now trying to create a situation where it allows these developers to change the, move the goalposts and change the rules in the middle of the game. That's unfair and it's unjust. None of us bought our properties thinking that, you know, we'd have a solar farm. And I, I love, I'm going to use air quotes here, farm. Nobody up here with a straight face can look at me and say, a solar panel is agricultural. Come on. Let's be honest. Now, I know that ship's already sailed. So be it. But at least you can protect us, homeowners. Because let me, let me tell you another thing. You're going to have this over and over and over again with this outlot situation in this county. You've got this many people today. Every time they come in with these solar panel, solar farms, you're going to have a whole bunch of people just like us coming up here to argue the case against having a solar panel coming up to the edge of your yard. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. You guys have an opportunity to do the right thing here, okay? And plus, this is three hundred acres we're talking about for this current project. And I get it, it's the whole county and so on, but we're talking about three hundred acres here in this particular one we all know that we're talking about for Google, okay? This one, you can do the right thing and three hundred acres go away, yes. And a couple of property owners, yes, are affected. Yes, absolutely. But there's thousands of more acres out there. They can go find and do the same damn thing they're doing now. But get it off of our backyard. What are your questions? I hope you do the right thing. I really do. I hope you do the right thing. This is a lot of people who are impacted here, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Andrew Poole, Matt Franzen, and Thomas Kukka.
Good afternoon. Andrew Poole, four seven zero zero Matty Street. I've come here for a couple, a couple reasons. Obviously, this borders my property. We've got many, many concerns, but speaking specifically to this text amendment and more specifically to the rationale listed out in the, in the staff report, I'd like to address a few of these things. The first one is, for a great majority of us, this is the first, this is the first notice we received of this. Letter from the planning commission dated July ninth, received on approximately July fourteenth. My first contact with Ranger Power was from Mr. Frank Fennessy, who stopped by my, my residence on July fourteenth. One week, one week prior to today. So I'm not sure what the, what the total process needs to be, but for a great, for a good chunk of us, we haven't been notified of, of the impact of this. And we have this adjacent to our, to our property. With respect to the staff, what the staff report says, a couple of the things on the planning, planning commission. P two point seven acknowledges the fundamental right to farm and preserve areas throughout the county for agricultural production by designating areas for rural residential development, thus limiting potential conflicts between farms and acreages. This current, the current zoning laws protect that right. They protect this, this particular, particular part of the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Moving forwards, P seven point one-two. L Plan twenty forty supports the preservation of land in the bulk of the county for agricultural and natural resource purposes. However, it recognizes that some parts of the county are in transition from predominantly agricultural uses to a mix that includes more residential uses. Balancing the demand for rural living and the practical challenge of integrating acreages with the traditional land uses will continue. My question to the commission is, in due time, we will have an east beltway, which will be very, very closer, this, this particular solar panel farm will be adjacent to that beltway and will limit the ability to, to balance that rural and, or balance the, the use of the land in particular. With respect to renewable energy sources, P eleven point two promote renewable energy sources. P eleven three, we must develop a comprehensive strategy of fuel diversity and encourage conservation, alternative forms of energy and modern techno, modern energy technologies. P eleven four, energy from renewable sources such as solar, geothermal, and wind technologies generally does not contribute to climate change or local air pollution. Currently, in the, in the LES system, LES receives a hundred and seventy-eight megawatts of power from the Laramie River Station, which is a coal-fired plant. That represents about twenty-two point seven percent of the peak load, which LES reports the peak load to be seven hundred and eighty-five megawatts, which happens to be approximately three to five o'clock in the afternoon on a good hot summer day when all of our air conditioners and refrigerators and freezers are running. LES has contracted with wind farms in Hayes, Kansas, North Nebraska, and in the Arbuckle region of Davis, Oklahoma. The Hayes, Kansas provides, LES has a hundred megawatts of power. The Prairie Breeze Two in Northern Nebraska, in association with all the other Nebraska wind farms, has one hundred and three megawatts, and Arbuckle provides one hundred. That's three hundred and three total megawatts, which accounts for nearly forty percent of the, of the peak power that we use that's already coming from renewable resources. In addition to that, Mr. Fennessy, when he stopped by my property, advised me that they would not build this until the, the power is sold. At the current moment, LES has contracted more power generation than what is actually necessary to power the city of Lincoln under, under the, the max load. Mr. Fennessy told me that, that at that time, if they can sell that power to an outside source somewhere other than Lincoln in Lancaster County, even Nebraska, they will accept any bid that, that they find acceptable to begin construction. This power is not guaranteed to stay within this area. It's not guaranteed to lower our, our electric bills, it's not guaranteed to lower your electric bills or mine or anybody else around us. The solar farm on Northwest Sixty-eighth generates a grand total of five megawatts, which is point six-four percent of our peak load. It's going to take a lot of area in order to, to generate any substantial amount. The biggest problem with, with these things is that when we have the most amount of need for power is going to be when we have cold, cold load regeneration. For those of us that were, that were impacted by the storms a couple of weeks ago, we know that as we were without power. When the power comes back on, everybody's, there is no cycling. Everybody's air conditioners, everybody's refrigerators, everybody's freezers runs at the exact same time. And this will provide more reliance on outside energy sources to provide that power due to the fact that these things will be in the dark. Most storms in Nebraska that take out power happen in the middle of the night. They're not eligible to, to generate those powers in order to, to help bring our, our systems back online and create our, our energy home, or the homes that we want to sleep in. The last thing I'd like to point out is a, a quick rebuttal of Mr. Levy's idea that this preserves landowner rights. This actually continues to inhibit landowner rights. All you can, the only thing that this text amendment wants to do is still limit the uses to ag production and solar farms. If a landowner has a desire to put up a self-storage unit, rent it out for RV, purpose it for RV storage or any other type of business, these landowners still don't have the right. If a landowner in, in Western Lancaster County decides that they want to do something different, when they read this text amendment, they're going to see that they can do agriculture or solar panel farms. This does not preserve landowner rights. It continues to inhibit them to two specific purposes. Thank you, and any questions?
Also included in the text amendment is the ability to add things like playgrounds, gazebos, picnic shelters. Are you against putting those in outlot spaces as well?
My understanding was that that was already in the current zoning laws with the green space. I'm not opposed to it, if that's your.
Yep. Thank you.
Next up is Matt Franzen, Tom Chutka, and Stuart Hoff.
Good afternoon. I'm Matt Franzen. I am at forty-seven twenty-one Matty Street. And I was just notified one week ago about this. It is a real project. I've been told that the ground around me that is owned by the developer has already leased out the property with contingencies of this permit that they haven't applied for. But this is the first grounds of doing so, to change this text. These are commercial, industrial-looking, commercial solar farms. I mean, they're huge fields. They will lower our property values. They'll be less than a hundred feet from my property. I built my own house in two thousand and five. I have a pond. Raised my kids there. And we don't want to look at these. The ambient air temperature's up to forty degrees warmer during the day around them. There's just all kinds of issues with them, and they're not meant to be in our backyards, and that's what this is doing. There's, there's a lot of different half-sections and quarter-sections of ground that you could place these on. Don't put them in our backyards. We're on eighty acres. The area around us is the remaining sixty acres of four homes. You're putting solar fields around our houses. You know, there's a lot of places that these could be. I'm not totally against grain energy and solar panel farms. I don't really want to look at them on my way home from work either, but I'm not opposed to them being in different areas. Just don't allow them to put, put them around clusters of homes. They don't belong there. I can't have one in my own house because the same developer that owns our outlot has written our covenants that I can't have solar panels. And the reason why he put that in there is because they don't look very good. So I can't have one. Please don't put a whole field of them around my home. I hope you guys will consider that. This is a big deal. So that's all I have. If you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Thomas Kukka. I'm sorry about the name. Stuart Hoff and Jim Skinner.
It's Tom Hoodkey, which is, the spelling is different.
Okay.
Forty-six hundred Matty Street. And again, just a couple comments. I never had much chance to really look this stuff all over, but two thoughts. One is that all the plots where I've seen their projected sites are, are just families with kids. You're going to have kids inside these fields, around them, close by. That wouldn't bother me as much as the fact that I took ten minutes to Google solar farms and they're known as dirty energy. They've been known to cause cancer and stuff like that, and we're putting it, our kids right into it. So that's what I've got. I, our property values are going to go. It's not what I signed up for when I bought my, my property. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Stuart Hoff, Jim Skinner, and Josh Bu, Builo.
Afternoon. My name's Stuart Hoff. I live at eight oh one nine Leo Lane in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'll be pretty forward on this. I work for the higher institution in this vicinity managing one of our research farms. I don't have any skin, personal skin in this game. But what I do have is a little bit of knowledge from associate of mine. Kiwett Corporation in Omaha has put up a four thousand two hundred acre facility in Northern Texas. And in the first pages, you get my handout, you can see that this is not farming. This is an actual industrial project. And this four thousand contiguous acres, they're all together. They are laying seven thousand miles of power cable. And you can read through, that's just one point. And you can read through this, and you can also see in the pictures of what the land is going to look like putting solar panels in. This land has to be cleared off for this installation to happen. Now, understand, once we do this, our tributaries in this area are not going to be able to handle runoff. With plants growing, trees growing, crops growing, there's infiltration into the soil. And once we get large rainfalls and this starts construction, our tributaries are going to have to handle the runoff and erosion soils from this, from these projects. All, right now, with the rainfalls we're having are, that are sporadic and high intensity, a lot of the meanders and small tributaries are having problems. They're, they're getting larger. And we haven't had an issue on North Hundred and Sixty-second Street, that large bridge north of Waverly, that that meander got out of hand because of our large rainfalls on the Salt Creek. It has had to be redone up there. They had to move four thousand cubic yards of material out of there to put moraines in to straighten the flow up. Think about the smaller tributaries or smaller bridges in this three thousand acre area. Even if they cover fifty percent of these acres with solar panels, that's going to increase the rainfall runoff on the hillsides and everything else, causing more rills and erosion, even to the county ditches where they dump into. I want people here to think, changing this zoning is going to affect everything down the road in the county in this area. We can move it to a different area of the county. That's fine. That's one thought. But that's going to be the same problem when we get in these hilly grounds. These panels and solar farms like this farms, yeah, they're not, they're, it's not harvesting. Really should be in an area where it's flat or surface, less rainfall, more sunlight. We get thirty-two average inches average rainfall a year here. Our cloud cover here, believe it or not, is probably about forty percent a year due to that. Now, if we moved it out west further, where there are substations around York or further out, they get more rainfall, or less rainfall and more sunshine. I, I'm, I'm really concerned about this project being right in next to Lincoln. When we already have problems with the things we have in our county right now, with roads, bridges, and everything else, this is going to intensify the problem in this area. And we got more housing coming out in that direction, so we're going to have more traffic, more eroding of the roads, and all that. The one other thing I wanted to say on this was, everybody said about toxicity and everything. The other three articles I threw in this, I would like everybody to read and pass it around to the county commissioners or whoever you want to. Like people have said, these are not as clean as they think they are. My problem, the other problem I have is what we're going to do about decommissioning down the road. It has nothing to do with the zoning here. But what I'm saying is, once we change the zoning law, we could end up having a Pandora's box we open, and we're going to have solar panels all the way around the city. You know, so I just want people to think about it. But please look at that first article from Kiwett Corporation. They, they had to do a lot of, and you can contact Kiwett on about it. I'll contact them, see if I could give this article to you, so. But that's, that's my point here. This is an industrial complex, and if we're going to have this in here, it really needs to be rezoned as industrial, commercial property because they are producing AC electricity from the solar panels, which produce DC electricity. It has to be inverted or converted to AC electricity. That is manufacturing at, you know, simple as that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for testifying.
Thank you.
Jim Skinner, Josh Builo, and Rick Rasby.
My name's Jim Skinner. I live at eighteen hundred North one hundred and seventy-six. This public hearing is about a text change to add the text and/or for the solar energy conversion system, including all necessary opportu, how do you pronounce that, thereto. Well, when you read the first part of this, in the AG zoning district, a minimum of fifty percent of the total area in the subdivision must be preserved as an unbuildable outlot to be as open space for ag uses. If you look up the definition of agriculture from the Webster's Illustrated Dictionary, it says, "The science, art, and practice of cultivating the soil, raising crops, and livestock, farming in general." Well, I own an older version of Webster Dictionary, so as time goes on, some verbiage or definitions may change over the years. some verbiage or definitions may change over the years. So I did a Yahoo search for the definition, "Our Meeting of Agriculture." It gave me five most popular definitions of "ag." And they're all real similar. I'll just read a couple of them. "The science, art, and business of cultivating the soil, producing crops, raising livestock, or farming." The definition of "ag agriculture" is "the science, art, and business of farming and ranching," or "the art of science, or science of cultivating the ground," include harvesting of crops and rearing and management of livestock, tillage, husbandry, or farming. Now, I don't see any place where it says anything in this definition about solar panels. When we built our house thirty-four years ago, we already knew we would be living in the country with wildlife, more birds, and sounds of tractors and combines, cows, chickens, and maybe some pigs. But never did we think we'd be surrounded by an industrial park full of solar panels with ten-foot fences, the chances that these panels made of lead and kanbium would leach toxic chemicals into our drinking water, create heat that would affect climate change, disrupt the wildlife in our area for years to come, and possibly catch on fire to release toxin fumes into our air that would affect our own lives. This is not agriculture. And if you allow this to happen, it will, for years, change the way of life for over one hundred homeowners in northeastern Lancaster County. You're the planning commission that will halt all future home building in northeastern Lancaster County and destroy everyone's home values to live there. No one will want to build a house out there. So if you haven't done your research on these solar panels, I suggest you start because a lot of us neighbors have done a lot of research on it. What we find is, it's, it's not good at all. So, any question?
Thank you for testifying.
Josh Builo, and the last person on my list is Rick Rasby.
Can I put this up here? Hi there. My name is Josh Builo. I live at thirty-three hundred North Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Street. This is my family, which most of you probably on TV could not see because we are a large family. We're a ten-plus family. We have eight kiddos, and we enjoy playing outside. For the speaker today to say that they're just solar panels is reckless and is very irresponsible. We have been less than notified about two months ago about a potential solar farm that we would end up seeing. This is going to affect our house. These outlots that we're talking about, I have on the screen, which I can't, if I can zoom out maybe just a little bit to show you, the outlot that would be facing the east of our house and on the north side of our house. A lot of times, people say it's just solar panels. First and foremost, I just want to at least say, I'm a believer in the Lord Jesus Christ, and the reason why that's important is because I'm called to love my neighbors, which most of these people that are here that are fighting against this, these are our neighbors. What this could potentially happen is fires. That Walmart has sued Tesla because of fires that they're starting on their own buildings. So potentially now, all of this land and even around our house even more can affect that we have rural firefighters that are volunteers that would have to end up being responsible for this. This is talking about protecting my family from this stuff. Let alone, we have tornadoes. Tornadoes that can throw these glass metal all over the place. My parents had their house blown away in Grand Island, completely demolished. I have friends that had their house demolished in the Halem tornadoes. This is something serious that we have to end up talking about today. Also, one of the CEOs for Ranger Power, who is, who is not here, but at the same time, I have on camera him saying that there is no lead in these solar panels. Okay? I have study, a Harvard study that talks about the lead that is in here, that if they are smashed by hail, tornadoes, wind, that the lead can be actually in the air and go into the soil. We're talking about, they say that this is gonna cause brain damage. We're not talking about a couple solar panels. We're talking about potentially millions of solar panels on these acreages that are gonna affect. This is gonna affect my whole family, and I've had a brother who has had a brain tumor. And if any of this causes it, everybody's gonna be responsible for it. And I'm a parent that's fighting for my kids. We don't even know if there's radiation that potentially could be affecting our kids. And we're gonna just say it's just solar panels. What I want to produce for you today is I've been notified about this less than a week regarding this agenda, but within that week, I'm gonna ask you guys, my schoolteachers from West Lincoln, Goodrich, Lincoln East, UNL, and where I graduated from Nebraska Wesleyan always talked about, don't complain about something, but come with a solution. So I'm gonna ask you today, has the planning commission performed a cost-benefit analysis for the best uses for right-of-ways? If we're wanting to do solar panels, the right-of-ways, there is thousands of acres that we potentially have in Nebraska that they could put these solar panels in the right-of-ways, which then would be generating income for our county more than this proposed eight hundred thousand dollars that this company has talked about for tax revenue. If you ended up doing fifteen hundred acres at the same cost that these guys are gonna try to lease this farm ground and all this stuff for twelve hundred and fifty dollars an acre, that's one point eight seven five million dollars that our county would generate if you would put them in the right-of-ways instead. Over forty years, if you did that same exact thing, you would end up, you would end up equalling seventy-five million dollars for our county, if you're talking about roads, schools, and all that stuff, versus eight hundred thousand over forty years, which is only thirty-two million. We're over double that if we would decide from a county standpoint, instead of doing this around residential homes where this is gonna affect our homes and our families. We have other options, but guess what? There's other people out there that are way smarter than me that I've only had a month to try to put this together. I've lost business time for me to end up studying and trying to research this stuff. So for someone to say it's just solar panels doesn't know much or is ignorant in regards to this. All of these homeowners that are here today, we are fighting against that this would not be put in our backyards around residential homes. This is wrong. Everybody knows in Lincoln, it is wrong. I sell real estate here in Lincoln. Most of you, some of you have probably heard my last name because it's been in the real estate business with my dad for thirty, my mom for twenty, and now me seventeen years. I know Lincoln. We can put a better plan together in regards to where a solar farm would end up needing to be than just saying, hey, let's put it around residential homes and setbacks of a hundred feet. I appreciate your time today. I hope you can see I'm passionate about this because this is gonna affect our family. So I'd ask if you guys have any questions, and I would ask you, please vote no to change this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Planning commis-, or Planning Committee and Chair, appreciate the opportunity to speak against the text amendment. My name is Rick Rasby. I'm located at twenty-three hundred North Hundred and Seventy-Sixth Street. I'm between Adams and Holdridge. I'm not sure I can follow that right there, okay? But I'll do my best. So I came with, with three things in mind, but really, the first time that I heard about this, we have lived on this property for twenty-one years. We've owned the property for twenty-three years. And I looked across the way and I said, I, I thought of how many years it took us to save, my wife and I, to save to do what we did. And I look across the way and I see these young people that are out here today that are against it. How many years that they saved to get this kind of opportunity, not only for them, but for their children? And, and I, I just felt sick to my stomach when I looked at the map at the open house and, and Land Enrolled was right around their, that, those, their houses. And so I was gonna focus my, my comments today on, on people, water, and wildlife. But I'm not sure I can add too much to the people because you already heard that part about the noise, about the possible chemicals, and that kind of thing. I would make a comment in regards to, to people, in regards to fire risk. If you take a look at it, putting those kinds of installations right up next to homes, I think is, is, there's a lot of risk, not only for the families, but also for the folks that will fight those fires. And I would say that I know for a fact within the, since two thousand and twelve, fires are a possibility. We've had two of those in this particular area over that time period. And our rural fire department does a tremendous job, but they are rural and they're volunteer. You have to remember that. So their response time, I think in town, I've been told maybe ten minutes. But for the rural fire department, if they're there within twenty minutes, that would be pretty good. I would say within twenty minutes, if there's a fire with, in these solar installations, it, it, it's pretty much, it's pretty much in an outrage at that point in time. So, we have firsthand experience. Two thousand and twelve, we had a fire next to our place. I called nine-one-one. Within, we live eight hundred feet off the, off the road, and within, I couldn't even get hung up from the nine-one-one call when we had the fire up within a hundred feet of our place. The other thing is, is that we do have native pastures around our place. And I, I, I think, when I see the proposal, or at least the, what they might do in regards to the solar installations, that they'll put pasture land pretty much, or I'd say species pretty much similar to what we had in our, in our, in our native pasture. I would say, once that, that fire hit that native pasture, it was like you threw gas on it. It went fast, and it was hot. And, and those kinds of things, it, it was so hot that trees didn't burn, they basically exploded. So I think from a risk standpoint, we really need to think about putting these solar installations up next to CUPs, next to CUPs, is, is, there's a lot of risk to that. Temperatures on wildfires, I looked it up, anywhere from four hundred to nine thousand degrees depend on the, the fuel and the oxygen, right? Lead, lead is solid at room temperature. Lead is liquid at six hundred and twenty-one degrees Fahrenheit. Lead is vapor at, at sixteen hundred degrees Fahrenheit. So if we have wildfires that range anywhere from four hundred and nine thousand degrees, we could get vapored fairly quickly. The other thing is, is that we have a fairly good-sized aquifer underneath the area that, that these solar installations are, are proposed. And I, I would just say that we can't make any more water. Okay? What, the water we have is what we have. And so I would ask that you think about how we can protect that to the best of our ability. The other thing is that we have a creek that runs to the north of one of these CUPs. That creek has, as long as I've been there, has not been dry. So it's a spring-fed creek. In my understanding, if there's installations, these solar installations may have to cross that creek more than once. So I would just ask, how do we protect that creek? Because that creek basically supports a very robust wildlife contingency or ecosystem there. Deer, beaver, raccoons, pheasants, quails. A no vote here would at least be the first step in protecting not only the water, but also the wildlife. I said, I would ask myself, I said, do we know the true environmental cost of renewable fuel, energy like solar panel installations? I cannot find good data, so I don't think we have data. And that, and that's a good reason for not allowing these installations, especially next to CUP and proximally to water, above and below groundwater. Thank you, and I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, are there others that would like to testify in opposition? You can just come on up as, yeah.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Tyler. I live at nineteen hundred North Hundred and Twenty-Ninth Street. I agree probably about a hundred percent with everything that's been said, except that it is infringing on the rights of the developers. When they sold us our property, this was something that they knew at the time that this was supposed to stay ag land. If you want to make a change, maybe you need to do it to future developers instead of the ones that have already taken our money, told us things were gonna stay agricultural around us. And then when they get a chance to line their pockets now with more money off the same land, they're changing their song. I'm not gonna waste a lot of your time because everybody else has said the same thing that I would've said otherwise, but if you could just think about that, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Further testimony in opposition?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. My name's Jim Bopp. I live at eighteen fifty-five North Hundred and Seventy-Third. I am here to speak in opposition to this. Full disclosure, I'm a career firefighter, so I have some expertise in this. Currently, I can't find any up-to-date regulations, codes, whether it be state, local zoning. However, I'm not an attorney, so I might have missed something, that address the concerns with this. Obviously, there's always a risk from lightning. That's an ignition source. Vehicles doing their daily maintenance, getting the grass going, some things you may not have thought of that I've dealt with in my career. Power production produces heat, has electricity going through it constantly. Man-made problem, animal problem, you have a spark that can ignite things. So there's all kinds of ignition sources here. And unfortunately, they're changing the fuel load. What I mean by that is obviously, I don't know what grasses are gonna plant, but it's gonna dry that grass out very quickly. These solar panels will burn to a certain degree. The inverters they put in put out a lot of heat, and those can cause ignition and also burn. So I look to some of my brothers out in the West Coast because they fight what we call wildland urban firefighters all the time, right? You get that wildland interface and urban, it's a very dangerous situation. And because he's gonna be within a hundred and sixty feet of my front door, it's definitely an interface. So I'm highly concerned about this for my family. So what they've done in California, they've come up with codes, and they basically mandate that they develop a fire protection plan. I've yet to see that. And it's definitely not a special permit. It's not in this amendment either, unfortunately. Some of the things they're gonna do is they're gonna hire an engineer, a fire protection engineer, when they do this in California and other, the other western states, is they study things like the topography. How does the lay of the land gonna affect the way that fire's gonna move? How's it gonna affect the firefighting efforts? It's really hard to push a hose uphill. They're pretty heavy. So they look at all that. They look in depth of the vegetation, and I am not a fire protection engineer or planner, but I will tell you, it's a very in-depth study. They took at things like flame spread, flame height, flame width, and how that's gonna affect based on the vegetation there. It's a huge study they do, and that's something that should be done. They're also gonna look at things like the history of that fire in that area. That looks familiar. Probably the most important thing they're gonna look at, and this came up again and again in my research, and I talked to some folks on the West Coast and someone locally. I'll mention that here shortly. One of the most crucial questions they ask in this plan is, is a facility of this sort going to expose significant risk of loss, injury, or death involving wildfires, including wildlands that are adjacent to urban areas, or residents are intermixed with wild, wildlands, which is definitely what you're asking us to do. You're asking us to put us intermixed with a commercial, industrial power production facility. That's what it is. And that's definitely gonna be an intermix, and it's putting us in danger. It's very close. And I'll explain some of that right here. So part of that plan is about access for the firefighters and apparatus. Then you have access roads that they get in. I talked to the Assistant Chief of Eagle Fire and Rescue. He has these concerns also. Some of his concerns, he told me I could voice, was in particular access for his tankers. You're talking about fifty-five thousand pounds of vehicle. If they don't put the right roads in with the right width, it's gonna be difficult. His vehicles in there do something. We don't know where buildings are gonna be. We don't know where these inverters are gonna be. He needs access to those to get to them. He needs gates. He needs roads. The other issue he has that you may not be aware of is this DC power. It runs underground. DC power is more deli to AC than, than human, to humans than AC. Excuse me. So he's highly concerned because as long as the electric, as long as the sun's out there producing electricity, which means the ground can be charged. You could kill the power in the AC and the inverter going out to the lines, but you can't kill the DC. It's there. So he needs to know how to handle that. He needs a lot of training and stuff. So that's something that needs to be in the plan. The other things that we, they talk about in these plans, the importance of vegetation management, that means ongoing. You can't just plant the grass, plant the trees, and walk away. We can't let these trees that are gonna up for screening die. They gotta live, or they're gonna be part of the fuel. You have to maintain the vegetation, and that needs to be figured out by an engineer. I'm not smart enough, but that's what these guys are trained to do. One of the things I talked, I talked to a gentleman named Matthew Holtie. He works for the Nebraska Forest Service. He's a fire management specialist. He's been a wildland firefighter. He's worked in places like Arizona and New Mexico. He's been to these fires. He came to our community. He looked around for me because I asked him to. He has concerns also. Right off the top of his head, he thought we needed things like a perimeter road that was a certain width
A minute.
to maintain that, vegetation management, and access. He agreed with a lot of things I brought up here. I want to thank you for your service to our community. It takes a lot of your time, I'm sure, to do this. And I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Other testimony in opposition?
Hi, my name is Brett Schunkweiler. I live at two zero five five North Hundred and Seventy-Third Street in Lincoln. And the proposed area, and, and when the gentleman came out to, to speak and talk with us, it didn't sound like it was gonna go anywhere around us. And then, to find out how my street works, at the end of Hundred and Seventy-Third Street, right across from me is a farm area, right to the side of me is a farm area. Right behind me is a farm area. So maybe there's someone else that's more affected, but as far as I know... a farm area. So maybe there's someone else that's more affected, but as far as I know, every single side of me will now be solar panels. So with that said, I'm a financial advisor, I own my own financial firm here in town, so I look more, you know, I want obviously to protect my kids, and I also look from a financial perspective of it. So I get that on your own property, like you should be able to do what you want, right? Like, hey, if I want to put a pool up, I want to put a pool. If I want to put a playground up, I'll put a playground up. And that is fine for my house and the, you know, the neighbors and things of that nature, because it does not affect them. But for them to put that up where I'm at, if it's going to decrease the property values of everybody around them, there's been numerous stats already. So for instance, I got a million dollar home, and if it's going to go down five percent to nineteen percent, boom, just like that, I lose up to a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Now, you guys are all very smart people. It's like, okay, well, one of your biggest assets as you're headed into retirement time is your home. So right now, people know the homes are selling, are flying off the market, very, very expensive. So if you were to lose tons of money for your retirement, right off the bat, that would be a very, very bad thing as you're heading into retirement for money and protecting yourself moving forward. Also, I think of, kind of I think of a movie like Aaron Brockovich. So, you know, that was the first thing that came to my mind when when this is going up. You know, we don't know, and at the time, they didn't know that there'd be anything negative about that. But, you know, when there is, because, you know, my my wife grew up in the Norris area, and we know here a handful of years ago, there was that tornado, right? So it's not a problem till it is, right? So now I have, and maybe you guys are different, but if you say, hey, you know, there's this proposed solar farm, and it's going to be on all three sides of you, outside of your house, and you've got kids that are eleven, nine, and seven years old, and now I'm worried, especially with the the times, I'm on the same street as a few of these people that just spoke, you know, I'm worried about my kids. Like honestly, you know, I have a babysitter most of the time for them, but, you know, a couple of years from now, when they're old enough, I can't feel safe if this solar farm goes up, you know, because what if there is one of them that something goes wrong and a fire started? They just talked about the temperature and the degrees and everything else of that nature. How in the heck can they get there in time, you know, knowing that, you know, I have three small kids, and they're going to be honestly in trouble if something of that nature happens to them with that fire? So usually to get one thing, you got to give up another. So, all right, they might have additional tax revenue coming in, you know, from if the these solar farms, but at what cost? We're giving up the cost of everybody else in here with all these homes in here. If the values go down five to nineteen percent, you might end up losing money in regard to that deal, if you're thinking at just purely that the cost perspective of potential money coming in. So that's pretty much all I had, you know, please don't let this go through because my family, my young kids, having solar panels all around me, it would really worry me for them and for everybody else in the community because this isn't, you know, the end, this is just the start of this, if you allow this to happen. So it's fine to do stuff on your own property if it's not going to affect everybody else around it. And I think that's really the decision at hand to be made. It's like, all right, well, can they do what's on their own property? Because I know that's what he's going to come up here and rebuttal and say, hey, they have the right to do what they want on their own property. Yeah, but if it's going to affect everybody else around you, and affect taxes and liability and kids and families, I don't think that that's the right call to make. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Further testimony in opposition?
Hello, my name's Mike Benz. I'm at seventeen forty-one North Hundred Seventy-third Street. So outside of the project that we know is proposed, let's just kind of talk about like noise level. So we're talking about, you know, solar farms and other equipment. Part of that is, as stated, you know, solar panels produce DC, they need inverters to go to AC. So let's just talk noise there. So I have it on record, a representative from them that says you can't hear them at property lines because of background noise. I moved out to the country, so there is no background noise. I ran some tests, and also as part of the last year, June, June, July timeframe, the planning commission there, the noise levels they approved, they're during the daytime, sixty decibels sustained ten minutes between seven AM and ten PM. Nighttime is fifty decibels, so ten PM to seven AM. So I bought a decibel reader, I have a rangefinder, my law, and my lawnmower at a hundred and fifty yards, not in line of sight, so on the other side of my house, was reading forty-seven decibels. My neighbors, we have a creek growing through our development, my neighbor's on the other side, anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred yards away. Theirs were reading around forty-five. So the inverters, you know, there's nothing out there, that noise travels. Earlier, we had somebody from Wyndham Place, which is quarter mile and a half mile away. I can hear kids playing outside. So with that, you're introducing noise pollution to us. So part of that, so the Lincoln Noise Control, Noise Control Ordinance, eight twenty-four, zero twenty states, excessive sound is a serious hazard to public health and welfare, safety, and the quality of life. The twenty forty comprehensive plan, paragraph one, I think line four, describes a, a community that values natural and human resources, supports advancements in technology, and encourages the development that improves the health and quality of life of all citizens. So we're stating that excessive noise is a health hazard. We've approved, or potentially approving, noise pollution, when the comprehensive plan says we want to improve the quality of life. So not sure how adding sound pollution improves my quality of life when that's part of our plan. You know, I mean, outside of that, you know, again, so toxic chemicals, I do have it on record that a representative from Ranger Power stated that they don't contain hazardous materials. Lead's one, I think ceridian's another one, if you Google it, it comes up, you know, that can leach. We're all on private wells. It's going to go right in my water supply. Yeah, they just, they, you know, representative wise, their communication has been horrible to us. Treat it like it's not a big deal. And I just don't think they're being very open about it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Bopp. I live at eighteen fifty-five North Hundred Seventy-third. My understanding is that part of your mission is to actively pursue input from interested and affected parties. So I want to thank you for listening to all of us very passionate and emotional people today. My husband and I moved out to our current residence about three and a half years ago. Prior, we lived in the city, raised our children, close to their schools, next to their activities, running around. I'm sure you all totally understand how that goes. Our kids are grown, living great lives here in Lincoln, and now it was our turn. It was our turn. Sorry. We worked really, really hard to get where we are in our little piece of the good life. I would ask that you consider us and all of the families that would be affected by this, that worked equally as hard to get where they are for their piece of the good life. I would also ask that you please consider your mission and protect our communities, our communities, unique natural resources, and not allow industrial power, solar farms, next to our residential areas that would compromise our property, maybe our lives, but definitely our good life. Thank you.
Thank you. Testimony in opposition?
Thank you, and good afternoon, and thank you for listening to us. And and I shouldn't have followed you because I'm on the same path as she is.
Can you tell us your
Oh, Tracey Larson. I live at thirteen hundred North Hundred Eighty-second Court, so I'm in Wyndham. I am not immediately affected, but I feel really bad for all the people that are. Because I am like her, my husband, I was born and raised in northeast Lincoln. We moved here from western Nebraska in seventy-six, my family did. And my husband has been here since nineteen sixty. And I can tell you from western Nebraska, this is not farming. Farming I get, it's agriculture, it is crops, ranch. I'm not a rancher because I can't kill anything. I love animals. But we built three homes. We did not take honeymoon ever. We don't do a lot of vacations. We built three homes in our lives, and this is our third one. It took us ten years to search all of these acreages in Lincoln, Nebraska. And we were very, very aware of the Beltway. We knew exactly, there's so many gorgeous homes that we wanted, and we said, no, can't do it, that Beltway's right there. We did not know, we moved in in twenty seventeen, there was nothing said about how they're going to change these farmlands around here. The reason it was so cautious is because I too have two daughters that are grown. They're both married, they both live in northeast Lincoln, they have homes, they bought them in their twenties, they have families. I wanted a safe place for them to drive out to to see me and not to see solar panels. And I am not a health nut, but I'll tell you right now, everyone knows on cell phones what the damage they do. That's why you put the little magnet on the back of your phone, because we all know that's not good for you. How many of you sit there with your cellphone and you talk constantly up to your ear for hours and hours and hours? We don't do that anymore because we know that's not good for us. You talk hands-free, or not at all, or you have this, or you just don't do it. It's not healthy for you. Your food labels, how many of you read your food labels? And just because it says a hundred percent natural or no MSG, that's not true. You flip it over. These people came in the back door, we didn't know anything about it. I'm hearing now there was an open house in June, I didn't know anything about it. I don't think you, I was invited apparently, maybe because I wasn't directly affected, but I am because I drive home every day. I walk our section, I pick up garbage. So now if I see a solar panel, like he said, that comes in a windstorm or hailstorm and it's busted up, am I supposed to pick it up? Right now, I pick it up with my hands of garbage, and I have two or three plastic bags, sometimes big, huge black ones, a couple of times, once every month. What do I do with a solar panel now? Who do I call? And because I am such a, an animal nut, how many of you enjoy your cup of coffee early in the morning and listening to the birds? Does anybody know what happens when these birds hit these solar panels? It's not a pretty sight. And you can't tell me just because you put up a screen or an eight foot fence that animals are not going to get in there because they will. We have turkeys and baby turkeys and goat that comes up. We never had that in Lincoln. This is not right. No human being would want to live behind a solar panel. And I don't know if you can see the picture, but I have copies of everyone to ask you. Will this show up on there?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if it's on my readers on. Do you want this in your backyard? Granted, this is in another country where there's solar panels, but this country is so poor right now. A tornado whipped through here, or hurricane busted them all up. So I'm saying, how many of you replace your shingles with hail? Not every once, every twenty-five years. I'm sure you do it a lot more than once, every twenty-five years. This happens, who's going to come clean this up? We can't even get workers today to work in a clean environment with all the toxicity coming out of here. I don't think I want to live where I am today and pay my taxes. I thought Nebraska's where I wanted to retire. We have worked long and hard. My husband has worked long and hard at his job getting ready to retire. We love to plant trees. That's where we spend our money. This is not right. No farmer with a good conscience would want this. And I know you guys are on the same page, and you would know this as well. So my ask is, would you rather have that at your neighbor? And like he said, too, we are putting hundreds and thousands of dollars into our home, planting trees, hoping that twenty, thirty years from now, I am putting oxygen back in the air. I may not be here, but maybe my kids will. And that's what we wanted. And if I can't plant enough trees to take care of this, this is putting more damages, it's not green, this is putting more damage in the earth than I can plant trees ever. So my ask would say, thank you for letting us speak our opinion. I've never ever been down here to do this, and that's just because it is something I'm passionate about, and I want to help my neighbors because they really did the, the hard work, the detailed work. I just have the passion and see the damage going forward. So.
Questions?
Would you like a photo to take home with you? Because I have plenty. Can I leave these with you?
Sure.
I think one picture tells a thousand words, or they say a picture tells a thousand words. So enjoy, and and you tell me which one you think might look a little bit better. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition?
Hello. Ry Collins, forty-five hundred North One Seventy-sixth. It's called the Blue Stem Estates, or Develop, Development. That's, I bought the lot two years ago, or three, and that's how it was advertised to me, that blue stem grass would surround the area. I'm in construction, and so I understand zoning. And, you know, I have a lot of trucks and a lot of equipment and a lot of employees. And I had to buy and put up another building in industrial space so that they would go there instead of come out to my place, because I've heard about guys running a business out of their, you know, house. And that's not the way it's done. You know, you eventually, they chase you out of there, and you have to go get industrial space, if that's what you're doing. And these seem to be industrial to me. Everybody else has already said what needs to be said. I have three little kids. We live out, we're happy out there. It's nice and quiet. There's no buzzing or no reflections everywhere. We pay a lot of property tax. It's a dollar an hour, my property taxes. So that's for one year, one dollar an hour. I mean, you're going to probably ruin that. But thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Testimony in opposition?
Thank you for listening to all of us. My name is Terry Cruz, and I'm on Wyndham Place, or H Y, one hundred and seventy-sixth Street, or Avenue, no, Street, I'm sorry. My address, one one three zero, North Hundred Eighty-first Street, Second Court. Gosh, sorry. Okay, I wasn't planning to speak, so I'm sorry. But I just, I want to say a couple of things. My husband, Richard Cruz, sent everyone, or sent in a really good detailed information and a couple, I'd really like you just to take a look at that. We are also not directly affected right next to us, but I think this comes down to knowing what you're really voting on. So it might seem like a very little thing, no big deal, possibly, if you remove the solar issue from it. But, so I know we're not even really supposed to be talking about that at this meeting, but it is the truth, and it's a fact. And there is, there was an open house, so that has to be on the table when you're considering this. It just has to be in your minds, and you have to take the time, please, and really research this. All right. I just agree, if we start this in beautiful Lancaster County, it's going to be a bad, bad move. I really believe that. It's unfair to change that definition of the cup at this point. Again, like someone else said, if you would like to do it later, to, you know, change, change something later, but you should not be doing it to people who have bought property now. There are, I don't think anyone is against solar, but there are solutions to having it elsewhere in the state. And my husband sent in a map that shows where the solar is better in the state. And so I think that is something to consider. I know it's not part of your decision, but that is just something you should be aware of. Just, and, you know, really understanding what this vote actually is about. The property tax, you know, our property values go down, your, our property tax goes down. And I just really feel it would be a travesty to allow this change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Testimony in opposition? Any other testimony in opposition? Okay. Okay. Staff questions? Who wants to go first?
Go ahead, Tracy.
So Tom, the language that is in front of us, the text amendment, for the changes that are actually in front of us, I do have some questions about them, and frankly, I have even more questions after our discussion today. Let me see if I can be coherent about this. I started out being a little confused about the proposed language in Section two-point-two-two. So let's start there. So that was the, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the area that's added seems to be drawing just the distinction between what's permitted as of right versus what is required to have a special permit in order to move forward. And we're designated that the outlot within the community unit plan, that would include the solar energy conversion system, requires a special permit. But you said earlier, it's all about size, so I was confused about that statement, and I want to know exactly what this language is doing for us.
Okay, so two-point-two-two is to the subdivision regulations, and it's to add language that, like I said, an outlot in a community unit plan would also allow solar conversion systems. I think, although it doesn't talk, use the term "special permit" in here, you can only do a community unit plan by special permit, so it's implied.
Okay.
I guess. I might need Jennifer Holloway to help me out here. And then, so I think that was added just to clarify.
When we're focusing on the honor before future effective date, I mean, to me, that draws a distinction between what that looked like before, and what we're talking about going forward.
I also just wanted to point out that what we're trying to say is that the solar energy conversion systems are for outlots and CUPs, and not, and we're trying to make it specific to that, as not, it would, it had to be a lot simpler if we just said "all outlots," but we're trying to make this narrow and specific to community unit plans.
Okay, and that makes sense to me. But can you address the, why we seem to be drawing out this future, this effective date, and what that means for the things that are contained in the final plat before that date?
Yeah, so the purpose of this language was, there was concerns brought up about people who have already done their final plats within a CUP, and want to use their outlots for solar now. And so that's why this language was addressed. So instead of requiring all those people, not that there are any that we're aware of, but maybe there's some that are, or have applied, I should say, if some of those people want to use those designated outlots for solar, then it's saying they don't have to go and amend their final plat and redo it. It's essentially saying, as of the date of this being approved, which would, it still goes to the county boards, whatever future approval date, then anything, any restriction language in a final plat that already exists, it can include solar.
So that conversation about reliance, that people who have relied on what's in their CUP when they bought their property, I mean, that's relevant to this, because that, we're saying that this is retroactive.
Yep.
And can be used versus being prospective.
Right. So that's, yeah, that's what that language does.
So folks, when they, when they came into a decision to buy property, and they read through their CUP, it said nothing about this being a possibility, it doesn't matter. That, I mean, it is now a possibility, and so people going forward, in all CUPs in the county, need to be aware that this could happen.
Correct.
Okay.
Jennifer, can I get you to identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, Jennifer Holloway, County Attorney's Office.
What's your address, please?
One-four-three-three-zero, Pear Street, in Waverly, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Dennis, did you?
Yeah, not exactly the same question, but I was going to probably get there. A different question. I know it's not unusual to have an applicant write the majority of a text amendment, as is the case here, so I know that's happened in the past. But as you analyzed what was presented to you, or was given to you, I know that the recommendation is approval, but do you have any reservations about any of this? As you went through that analysis, I'd like to understand a little bit of how you got to approval, if there were any reservations about any of this, the way it is presented now. Do you have any concerns?
So do you mean legal concerns?
Legal concerns are in terms of, what it means in terms of land use and comp plan, and those applications as well, Tom.
Well, as far as the text amendment part, the applicant wrote it, we reviewed it, made some suggestions, send it back.
Okay, so there's a give and take?
There was some give and take, and both the applicant and planning and law department, you know, ended up at what's being presented today.
Just to follow up, in terms of legal concerns, what Tracy was talking about, the way I would talk about what potentially could happen here if this gets approved all the way down the line, about retroactive, is, I refer to that as developers doing a bait and switch. And that's sort of what happened. Is there any issues with that? I mean, I know that there are property rights and honors, can develop their property, but to have something new come along that is controversial, that people didn't know about when they put a pretty good amount of money or effort into developing their piece based on goodwill, how does that, from a legal standpoint, stand up?
So, I mean, that is kind of difficult to answer. I mean, I get it from a personal standpoint, the problem, I mean, and I have no skin in this game.
Yeah.
I am just, yeah, I'm here to help with the language, and have it make sense and be enforceable. I do, I guess my main concern with the retroactive was not amending those final plats, which is typically required if anything's changed on a final plat. But, and that's something that can, I mean, all of this, this isn't final by any means, as you guys know.
Right.
We can suggest changes when we work this out with you guys. My concern, or, I guess what I would say, that I don't have too many concerns as far as new land uses, new special permits being allowed and coming up year after year. I mean, I would say it was maybe two years ago, we even really honed in on the solar anyways, you know, two thousand and fifteen was wind. So I don't know how many of these people bought land before two thousand and fifteen, but wind, wind wasn't contemplated then. That's just kind of the nature of land use, and new uses coming up. And that's the purpose of a text amendment, is to get those regulations to not just protect the developer, but more so the landowner, the land use, comp plan, all of that. And so I think that's, that's the big part legally, is finding that balance and that language to hopefully weigh the pros and cons for both sides.
Okay.
Are there, are there other regulations that are in play with regard to solar energy conversion systems in the county?
Well, we have the special permit for it, that was adopted about a year ago.
Right, so that, that would be, obviously, those would come into play with the special permit process.
Correct.
Right, when they, when they apply for a special permit, they have to meet all the conditions that were laid out and approved by the county board last year.
And all the conversation with regard to fire safety, and all the different materials that might be involved, and all of those issues, I mean, that's within that process, I mean, within the regulations that deal with the
Yeah.
... conversion system.
I mean, it's something they can look at now. I'm not sure how much additional conditions they can put on when we already have set in place certain conditions under a special permit.
Right, right, understood. But those types of issues were considered when that process was put into place?
Can I, can I just add something? One of the, part of the testimony we heard today was regarded to stormwater, which, you know, I'm not an expert on a lot of this solar stuff, but I do know about stormwater. It's kind of what I've done in my career. When we, Planning Commission, gets an application, special permit application that comes through, the county engineer, all of the typical reviewers that typically review an application, they will weigh in on every single application regarding not just fire, but stormwater and everything else, right? Every single time?
Correct.
Because that's a site-specific thing? That's true? Okay.
I mean, if you recall, we had an application about a year and a half ago, under the city, city jurisdiction, for a solar project, and
Right.
Yes, all the different departments looked at it and weighed in on it.
Okay.
And some of those conditions require additional approval, so as you're aware, a lot of special permits require a road maintenance agreement with approval of the county engineer, so some of those require even, even extra.
Right, and with a special permit, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Planning Commission has the ability to actually add conditions because of the special permit process?
Correct.
If it, yeah, if it's appropriate, okay.
Right, you can't condition it out of existence, but you can
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And kind of go to what Tracy was saying, was, just because it now defines or includes solar, they still have to meet the other requirements within the, within the special permit. So like Tom was saying, it's a permitted use to have a small solar, well, small solar facility in an ag district, but if you want to do large or small in an AGR and residential, just because it's allowed within an outlot, you still have to meet those other requirements that are applicable within your zoning regulations.
Tom, can you maybe talk a little bit about how the planning department decided that solar panels were an agricultural use instead of industrial use?
I, I don't think we called it an agricultural use. In the analysis, we specifically say it's, probably we can all agree, it's not an agricultural use, but the AG district allows lots of things that aren't agricultural, per se. The county board decided a year ago that solar energy conversion systems were a appropriate use in the agricultural district by the special permit. So we looked at the, kind of looked at then, outlots and CUPs, how do they differ from a parcel right next door that is zoned AG and is not in a CUP? So if it's agriculture here, and you can put them here by special permit, this is agriculture, but because of the way the zoning code's written today, you couldn't put it in there. Land use-wise, this is probably being used similar to this. So we looked at it, that it still meets the intent of the special, of where solar is to go, and meets the intent of the comprehensive plan.
And just to clarify, solar is not an agricultural use. You guys have the word agricultural defined in your zoning regs, and this isn't in addition to add solar as an ag use, it's an additional use, separate from ag. So an outlot can be used for various ag uses as defined, now also, if approved, for solar. So just because it's in the agricultural district, it is not agricultural. It can be an industrial, it can be a residential, that doesn't make it residential or anything.
Can you give us an example of an industrial use that would be allowed in an ag-zoned
I guess we could say winter mines.
Yeah.
Call that industrial, that's, I mean, some of the ones I mentioned in the staff report, but they're not industrial. You know, campgrounds, veterinary facilities, clubs, healthcare facilities, recreational facilities, those are all uses allowed by special permit in the AG agricultural district. There's others, I just picked out a few. David's going to save me.
No, no, I, David Carey, with the Planning Department, five oh five, South Tenth Street. I just want to kind of emphasize what Tom was just explaining there. So I think we just want to have clarity where there's a special permit piece to this consideration. And so through our process last year, and the county board agreeing and approving that the solar use was approved as a special use. So the, whether it's, the activity itself has been agreed, it is an allowed use as long as it goes through and follows the requirements that have been identified. So I just want to reemphasize that, so, and not stray too far away from that point.
Why, why you're up there then? That image that you just put up there, Tom, with the green portion of the CUP? So, say we're looking at that, and they decide to put solar panels there, do we then review that as a special permit?
Yes.
So we would see that in front of us on every CUP that decides to do solar panels?
Oh, as part of the CUP? They couldn't do it as part of the CUP? I mean, they still have to have the special permit for a large solar conversion system.
Right, so that green piece, well, so, so the concern that this is retroactive, we will see every solar panel project?
Unless it's a small.
And, okay, so what's the definition of large versus small?
I don't have that in front of me.
That'd be awesome, thanks.
It has to do with the, how much it puts out, I believe, energy.
The energy amounts, okay, yeah, that would be helpful to know. So I'll wait for that.
So just to say it one more time, so I make sure I've got it clear. As it is, as things stand now, the county board has approved the use of solar panels through the use of a special permit, in certain areas, not to include CUPs. This text amendment is saying that CUPs could allow it, again, by special permit, if it is large and not small?
Correct.
So if it is a small area of a CUP
Not, not a small area, it's
Small, small, in terms of the
Solar system.
Right. But that would not then require any additional permitting?
Only an AG. If you're an AGR residential, a small special, or a small solar would still require a special permit. It's only an ag that a small solar is permitted. And small is anything with a rated capacity less of a hundred kilowatts.
Okay, we have that testary. Small solar system, less than a hundred kilowatts, allowed by right in AG.
But special permit in AGR or residential.
And so basically, you're saying, like with this diagram that you have up here, the stuff in, I don't know what color you want to call that, tan, gray, whatever it is, you know, they could apply for a large solar system, sounds like we're putting planets planets in there when I say it like that, um, on, you know, they could apply for it there, and so you're saying, okay, if they can apply for it there, why, why are we not allowing them to apply for it in the green area?
That's basically what the text amendment's about?
Trying to make it equitable.
Yeah.
Equitable is
I mean, yeah, I don't know equitable, but it, make it an option.
Fair, it's the same thing.
Make it an option for people who have a CUP, it makes it an option in the outlaw, yes, to do solar.
We can't take questions right now, I'm sorry.
We do have an, um, an amendment to 15.007 to add some additional language, just for clarification. The part in yellow, add in accordance with Article 13. Article 13 is the special permit chapter of the zoning code.
I also remove the designations of permitted and special permit. And so it just pretty much shows what an outlaw is within a CUP and that if it is, if a special permit's still required, it's still required.
Question about procedure for open meetings. This was not made public prior to the meeting and no changes to be made with this. We're not taking public comment.
We're not taking public comment, but that is incorrect, so.
Um, I'm sorry, ma'am, if you, I'm, we can't take, I mean, you've had your chance to testify, we, we can't, that's not how this works.
Um, as you're all aware, within the Open Meetings Act, you are allowed to make changes as proposed in the procedure. This minute, right now, it was made public before you and it's for your comments, not for the public's.
Planning Commissioners, other questions for staff?
I'm, I'm still fuzzy, so, sorry about that.
No, go ahead.
Um, so when you look at the 100 kilowatts, I just did a quick little search myself, that's 6,500 square feet-ish of, of solar panel area. So that, so we're going, I'm going to use the green diagram again. So if that is like one house lot size comparison, that's all the panel that could be on that whole green area without a special permit.
Um, I am
If the, if the kilowatts is a logical, I'm just using my own expertise from a concept standpoint of how many solar panel it would take to generate 100 kilowatt, depending on the system, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I have no idea about size, all I know is 100 kilowatts. So say there's
Right.
One, if one panel can create 99 kilowatts
Mm-hmm.
It's allowed without a special permit in an AG district on a CUP outlaw.
And no matter the size of that outlaw?
No matter the size of the outlaw.
Okay, thank you.
But if it's 101
Then it needs a special permit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was wondering.
Thanks.
Um, other questions for staff? Okay, applicant rebuttal.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, excuse me, again, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 625 South 14th Street, on behalf of the applicant. I really, I don't have a lot to add, a few things, I think your discussion just now with staff really brought the issue, brought some clarity to the issue. I, I'm glad Tom left his diagram up here, because I'll put it up here again. And, and again, this, this is not a special permit application, we were certainly taking notes and we will be prepared if and when there is a special permit application to respond to all of the things that were brought up. And, and a lot of those are things that are addressed already in your zoning regulations, which find that balance, or try to find that balance between property rights for a developer, a property owner and, and the neighbors, screening, setbacks, all of those things. So I, I do want to say that again, because I, I really do think that that is important. This is a text amendment only for the county to make this one change. Today, under your zoning regulations, a utility scale solar project can go here. If we focus on this as the, the residence, a utility scale solar project can go here with a special permit, meeting all of the setbacks and screening requirements and all of those other things. What this text amendment would do, and, and if that private property owner voluntarily puts his or her private property to that use, and only if they do that. What this text amendment would do is allow that same thing to happen over here. That's all it does.
And only if that property owner chooses?
Absolutely, and only if that facility meets all of the protections and requirements in your zoning regulations and that this commission or the county board might put on those. When I, when I say this is a, a quirk of zoning or a, you know, a, a technical matter, it, it really is, it's, it's not as if we're saying it's not allowed here now and we're going to allow it here. It's allowed here now, what this would do is allow it over here. It's the same, it's agricultural land. It, it might be a cornfield, it could be a feedlot, right? It could be a lot of different things, whether you want to call it agricultural, industrial. Zoning is not a guarantee. Zoning is not a right, zoning is a privilege. You all know as well as I do, zoning changes all the time, right? The zoning could change over here. There could be houses built over here. There's no guarantee when this person buys their house, builds their house, whatever it might be, what's going to be across the street. None, none of us have that, unless they own across the street. And you heard from the one testifier that she bought the outlaw. That's protection, she owns the outlaw, that's private property rights, regardless of what Lancaster County does, or the neighbors do, or whatever the case might be. Other people own these outlots, they have property rights. You can build a utility scale solar project here today with all the protection, setbacks, special permit, public hearings, public testimony, water quality studies, fire codes, all of those things. All this does is allow you to build it over here. And there's no difference, if you were standing there, if this was a 3D view of, you know, Google Earth, Google Street View, there's no difference between this and this. They might both be a cornfield, they might both be a vineyard, they might both be a feedlot, whatever the case might be. That's all this is. And I, I don't mean to minimize the people's passion who've testified or the importance to them in any way, shape, or form, I, I understand that, I, I, I truly do, I appreciate it. They're entitled to their opinion, as, as we all are, but, but what this is before you today is only that. So with that, I don't have anything further to add, I would be happy to answer any questions. A lot of things were brought up about solar in general. I'm not responding to those because this is the text amendment and it is that narrow question that I just pointed out on the diagram. If you have questions about that, I'm certainly happy to answer them. And, and again, we will absolutely deal with those things in a special permit hearing, of course.
Questions?
It's like I have a question, but I don't know how to ask it. And I don't know if you're even the right person, it's still, it's still just a little, the small is bothersome because of the, what we've heard today about the retroactive and the testimony. How would you respond to that as one of the applicants?
With all respect, it, it's, it's not relevant, it's, it's a distraction. What we're talking about is utility scale solar energy facilities. 100 KW system, as you figured out, you said 6,500 square feet, something like that, that, that's a personal system. That's a system that a farmer might put in to run grain dryers, or to keep a barn warm, or, you know, something like that. That's really a different thing altogether, that's a different land use entirely, and that's why this county and, and most counties regulate those differently, because it's a little bit like putting in, I don't know, a machine chad or something, right? It's, it's pretty
Similar size.
Yeah, similar size and, and pretty
Beer machine.
Right, it's, yeah, or, you know, adding a, an outbuilding, a garage or something. It's, so it's really two different things, I, I'm kind of, I'm sorry it came up because it is confusing. But it's, again, with all respect, it's, it's not relevant here, it's not what we're talking about. If somebody could build one of those in an outlaw in an AG district without a special permit, you know, so be it. If that's something that the county wants to look at again, so be it. You, you might remember when we had the Planning Commission hearing on the, on the solar regulations, one of the commissioners brought up, well, should we let them, should we let, I think, what did we talk about, 50 acres be a permitted use without a special permit? Right, I mean
Right.
That discussion can go a whole bunch of different ways, but to your question, Commissioner, the, the small versus large really isn't, it's not relevant here. Again, with all respect, I know you're struggling with it, and so I don't mean to diminish that, but what we're talking about here is a completely different, a different thing. And, and these are regulations, the way your regulations are written, there's a section for small systems, meeting that definition, and a section for large systems. What's before you is the section for large systems.
That helps.
Would it be appropriate to say, to phrase it this way, this text amendment, if approved, would give it someone the chance to apply for its permission to put a solar farm? It doesn't guarantee them, they still have to go through a whole nother approval process with public input before they could build a solar farm?
Absolutely, that's, that's very well said, and, and the only nuance I would put to that is it gives somebody the opportunity to include this piece of property as a developer or the property owner in that application. Today, they can include this piece if they want to. It gives the owner of this the opportunity to include that if they want to, the developer the opportunity to include that if they want to. There are a lot of people who want to participate in these projects, and, and they have property rights too, right? That's part of the balance. So it, it is giving those people that opportunity, if they own this, if there are not restrictive covenant, covenants on it that would prohibit that, to do that, but it guarantees nothing.
Just gives them the right to apply.
Exactly, that's exactly right. And, and again, that's a right they already have over here.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yos?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Edgerton Love?
Yeah, Delise, okay.
She'll leave.
Uh, Core?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I would also make a motion that we deny text amendment 21005 changes.
And you said to deny, right?
To deny.
Second, Joy.
And I'll speak to that a little bit. I, I do think it is retroactive to the people that are in a CUP at this point, throughout the county, not just necessarily in this area. And so I think they should be grandfathered out of any changes that the planning department may wish to bring forward to us for consideration. If we want to place it, place it for future CUPs, then people go into the situation knowing what they could face and who is going to own the outlaw could be determined at that point, whether they want to develop it or not develop it in that regard. There's plenty of raw farm ground, and even if you've got a CUP, it doesn't guarantee that on all four sides of you, that somebody may want to rent their, their, their land to put in a solar farm. But it would allow the people that already are in a CUP to maintain what, their lifestyle in that, that area as they determine it would be based upon the regulations we have in place. So I'm not against the solar farms, and I'm not against that, the expansion into the outlots in the future. But in this case, I think the people that are sitting with CUPs presently, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is, is if we don't maintain these outlots around the CUPs, they are intentionally developed out in the county so we can do build-throughs of houses and so on. And if you take the outlots around these CUPs and you put a wind farm on them, that pretty much creates a roadblock to building, building through in the county. So I, I think we just need to, to be very careful not to eliminate some of the things we have in place that I think are properly set up, especially the build-through ideas of clustering the houses so that future city grows out in those areas. And secondly, the regressive nature of the, of the amendment at this point. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I guess maybe that's where I've been having the challenge and obviously the confusion of small and large, because the covenant can deal with not having solar panels in the houses, it sounded like one was set up that way, one gentleman said. So that off the table. The retroactive aspect of it is a challenge, and looking at that and representing the thought process on that as a planning commission is why I seconded that amendment, or that motion.
I, I did have problems with the retroactive nature of this. In fact, I had written down to myself to maybe propose an amendment that said, you know, we have a cutoff date, so any CUPs created after this text amendment is adopted, you could put solar farms on, but anything before that, you couldn't.
I'd rather let the planning department look at it and come back to us with the recommendation. I think yours is the correct direction, but I'd rather have them work with the law department and everything so that it comes back properly.
So just based on what I'm hearing is I would advise that you would amend, amend it, since you, it sounds like a consensus where you guys don't want to go retroactive. That's an easy fix, instead of before, it's after. And just as a reminder, is even, even a CUP that already exists, if it's on or before, any new CUPs would have to go through this, they would have to go through the special permit, but even an old one. So there's really no need, I mean, there's no need to go back with planning and, planning and me, because we can solve those problems right now.
So her amendment would be appropriate?
Yeah, she wanted to move, move approval with the amendment to essentially take out the retroactive language, and it would essentially be on or after the date that the board eventually approves, or
The county board approves.
Yeah, if they do approve it. Yeah, any future CUPs, solar could be included, any past CUPs would have to go through that process as well and be amended to be included.
I'm, I'm hopefully going to be helpful here.
Can you identify yourself first?
David Carey, Planning Department, 505 South 10th Street. Let's just keep, keep things in, in order here. So Dick's motion was to deny. If we're going to work on amended, an amendment, then we would have to clear that out and then go to a motion to approve.
Does he follow the legal protocol on that? He either withdraws his motion, he withdraws versus us
Or we deny the denial.
If we vote against, so then that's, yeah.
Right.
Procedurally withdraw.
He can withdraw if he would like, otherwise if he does want to deny it, then you guys can take that.
Would you, would you state your amendment that you're wanting to add?
Sure. What I would add in here would be any new CUPs created after this text amendment is approved, if that's what the county board does, they could have solar, commercial solar. But if it was, if a CUP created, an already established CUP that we have right now, they are, they'd have to follow the rules as they are right now.
I would, I would remove my motion then.
I'll remove the second. I'll remove the second.
Okay.
Can we ask another question procedurally?
So, wait, so, but, hold on though. The, the motion's been withdrawn, so we need a new motion in order to have discussion.
So, do you want to go ahead and make it?
So I move that we approve the text amendment as amended. No, you haven't made your amendment. You could have done that.
Basically, the motion would be that we approve the, the text amendment changes after the date the county board, if it does so, approves the changes in the text.
Can you make that in one motion? Or do we have to make a motion to approve and then amend?
This is what I would suggest, is that you make a motion to approve with amendments as drafted by the county attorney's office to not only include removing the retroactive and then also to include the additional language that I, that Tom and I previously showed you just to make it clear that a special permit is still required when necessary.
That, that's.
And you are willing, you can.
Yes, what she said.
Yeah, that's, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion on that part then.
Well, I think that solves my problems. I think the people that we're dealing with countywide that are already sitting in CUPs deserve to have the protections that they build under or bought the property under with our, with our existing ordinances. And going forward, people are forewarned and they can figure out how they want to deal with the property. They may want the, the solar. So that I think would put people on notice ahead of, ahead of time and, and let them make their own decisions on property ownership.
I have a comment. I was actually going to make this at the first motion that was withdrawn, so it might sound a little weird, but I think it's still relevant. So one of the people who testified said that we need to be aware of what we're voting on, and I totally agree with that. And not that I disagree with the motion, I may in fact still vote for it, but I may not because part of what we're voting on is to address what a lot of us have referred to in the past as in these kinds of situations, the city-county rub. We're in that again. That's what this is, this, to me, that's what this is really all about. And is this approach to solar appropriate in that area of the rub? CUPs especially are things that are not found far away from the edge of the city. They're, they're pretty close to the edge of the city usually and not really in agricultural land. It's a mix of uses, land use. So to me, it's about, this is obviously about land use and property rights. It's also though about public health, safety, and welfare. And, and it comforts me that the special permit process allows us to address public health, safety, and welfare in a very specific way with this issue. But our 2040 comp plan also talks about sustainable communities. And I think that sustainable communities and the, the definition that we as a community are constantly talking about with sustainable, sustainable communities changes almost continuously. And, and I think it's really important for us to, to think about solar, and again, I support solar, but is it, in this context, should solar ever be thought of as an appropriate use where this urban county rub occurs? Dick made a great point that I didn't think about is that is usually the place where we develop into.
Yeah.
That has huge impacts. And, and so just thinking about all that stuff, I'm, I'm just, I'm still a little nervous about saying, yeah, this is an appropriate approach to this. So I just wanted to get that out there and, before we vote. But I, but the, but those things are running around in my head and I just, I don't know, I just for myself, don't know about this yet.
Yeah, and I, I think what you brought up is so where I'm not putting two and two together because of that concept of all the things that we've talked about as fellow commissioners, the pass-through, the, how we're protecting and why we have the 20 acre rule versus the cluster versus the outlaw versus an AGR. And how do we help manage that from a land use standpoint, in a recommendation standpoint to the board?
Right. So, anyway.
Well, I think, I think we would be able to have that input as a project, if a project develops and comes forward, we could determine that that project is going to prohibit proper development into that region and say, no, it shouldn't go there.
I see what you're saying.
And so I think we have a, an ability to control or make that decision with that rather than saying three mile edge, you know, or, or whatever. I think it could be even outside of the three mile and still have a major impact of where we're headed.
That, that helps me too because I was going to play devil's advocate a little bit and say not all CUPs are for build-through. I mean, some people do use that so that they can circumvent the 20 acre size rule and, and get some stuff done. So in a case like that, a solar could be, you know, appropriate, but if it's closer to the edge.
I think I need to clarify something.
Okay.
Okay, so we're doing county zoning.
Mm-hmm.
We're beyond three miles of the city, then three miles of the city limit. Build-through CUPs are only under city zoning. They are not in county zoning. So this text amendment or CUPs in the county has, build-through does not apply.
Well, is it not accurate though that the county board adopted the clustering to encourage leaving open farm ground for the future, but how, whatever way it developed?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think the open space is for future development. It was, and CUPs have been along, longer than I'd been in the planning department, so probably 30 years at least. It was just a way to allow the same amount of houses in an area, but not make them be on 20 acres.
Right.
So it was a way to cluster the houses and leave a larger area intact for farming.
Right.
But not necessarily future development.
Well, I.
For houses.
I do know with my wife having spent 16 years on the county board that that was a consideration that the board had at that time. And they, they also were looking to keep agricultural ground in production, but they also recognized Lincoln's rules with the three mile limit and the build-through propositions that it, in the future would come into the county.
At some point, it'll, it'll get there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, good discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Are we ready to vote or doing? Okay, Jerry?
Okay, so this is on the motion to amend and I'm not exactly sure of the text or the language. Basically what I have written down is to remove the retroactive reference and include the proposed language provided by staff to section 15.007. Does that sound correct?
Fifteen.
Point 007.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Amended language.
Does this have my part of the amendment in it or just, it does? Okay.
Yeah, it's as amended.
Okay.
So we don't have to vote on the amendment separately. It can be included, right?
Oh, okay. So, okay, then we're just doing one?
Just one more try to be helpful. So the way that, the way that you discussed it when Jen was up here was that is the amendment. I mean, that's the, the action that you're taking. Include that language, includes that change. So it's motion to approve with that change in it.
Okay.
Got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready, Jerry, for real.
Okay.
For real.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
No.
And Core?
Yes.
Motion failed due to lack of receiving five affirmative votes.
So this will be held over until, I hope I'm saying this right, until next planning commission meeting?
Correct.
Except that the public comment period is closed?
Correct.
So it will be just a vote only?
Correct.
When we have more commissioners present.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. I'll call for a motion.
I'll look to adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Sorry.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
We are adjourned.